Welcome to this historic meeting of the South Bend Community School Corporation, coming to you from cyberspace. I am President John Anella, and before, I believe Ms. Hernandez will do roll call, but before I have her call roll, I would just like to read a brief statement. That's okay with you? During this extraordinary time, we would like to first thank all the first responders, especially nurses, doctors, and all other caregivers who are risking their safety for the benefit of all of us. And especially our hearts go out to all the people who have been affected by this crisis, especially those families who've dealt with sickness and death. And, and of course, we'd like to thank all of the employees of the South Bend Schools for going above and beyond during this time of crisis, to our food service workers, building and facilities workers, bus drivers, secretaries, principals, and of course, our teachers. Many of you are working on the front lines for our students, and we are so grateful for all that you are doing. And a big thank, thank you to all the people who have made e-learning possible as well during this historic time. A crisis tends to bring out the true character of a person, and the South Bend Schools has more than risen to the challenge. South Bend Schools has been a leader and has demonstrated how vital it is to this community by providing devices to every student, working hard to ensure everyone has internet access, feeding students and families, and continuing to pay all workers through this uncertain time. We have never been so proud to be part of South Bend Schools, and can only express how grateful and thankful we are at this time to all the people who work for South Bend Schools. Please stay safe, healthy, and we hope to see your, all your smiling faces soon, because we'll get there, and we'll only get there together. Okay, now we can go to the roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes. Mr. John Anella?
Here.
Ms. Leslie Wesley?
Here.
Mr. Rudy Montrose?
Here.
Ms. Stephanie Ball?
Present.
Ms. Alitha Jones?
Here.
Dr. Ruth Warren? Dr. Sturt Green?
Here.
Dr. Ruth? Dr. Ruth, you're on mute if you want to make sure that you are heard for your roll call. There you go.
How's that?
Here.
With Warren?
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Gabby. Next, we need to adopt an agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? By Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Wesley. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, we have an agenda. Approval of minutes is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes of 1:27:20, Board of Finance and Regular Meeting, and 2:03 of 20. So we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Mr. Anella?
Yes?
Hi, I'd like to interject a request here concerning minutes.
Sure, did we get a second? Hold on. One second. Leslie, motion, do we get, do we get a second?
No, no second.
Okay, we got a second from Mr. Montrose. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Okay. In the spirit of transparency, I would like to make a request moving forward that we include board comments in the written minutes. I think it's important to be able to include comments, because oftentimes that is how a board member will express the reason why they made a certain vote, so I would, I would like to make a request going forward that we include board comments on agenda, on acting agenda items in the written minutes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. So would that be summarization of comments, or do you want a word by word verbatim?
Personally, I prefer verbatim, but summary would be better than not having any comments at all. I, I would like to have verbatim minutes throughout, but I think the secretaries would string, you know, because sometimes board meeting goes quite long, but if we could have a summary for now of the comments, because oftentimes, like I said, that explains why a board member decided to cast their vote the way they did for future knowledge.
Yep, yep, no, that makes a lot of sense.
I think you have to do, John, I think if you do two things, you have to adopt the minutes, and then you have to go in and ask for a motion to include. They have to be two separate.
Um, well, okay. Ms. Jones, are you asking to have those comments included in these minutes? Because we can, we can change that going forward and having it included. If we wanted to include them in the prior minutes, then we would have to motion and approve.
Uh, not these minutes, moving forward, right, moving forward if we, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just take that comment, and then we can include those in the future, but then we don't need to amend the existing minutes. That's good.
Point, point of information?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Anella, what I can do as Board Secretary is follow up to make sure what the guidelines indicate as far as what the law indicates, and then follow through whether or not we need it seems to me that what Ms. Jones is indicating is, it should be a matter of course that it, that the entire meeting should be transcribed, but I'll follow up with Mr. Kubicki and see what the actual law says.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, yep, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from 1:27 and 2:03, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Okay, we've approved the minutes. Uh, now we're on to recognition. Uh, the floor is yours, Dr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Anella. Hello, hello, Board of School Trustee members. Um, in the time we've been out of school, we have passed two substantial weeks, and we want to make sure that we recognize two separate groups of employees. So first, Mr. Rudy Montrose is going to read our Board Resolution for National Paraprofessional Day, and after he's done, Ms. Stephanie Ball will read our resolution celebrating Assistant Principal Week. Mr. Montrose?
Thank you. National Paraprofessional Day Resolution. Whereas paraprofessionals provide quality services and perform indispensable roles in the education of South Bend Community School Corporation students. And whereas across the district, paraprofessionals transport students to schools, keep our schools safe, clean, and well-maintained, operate our schools official, school offices efficiently, and keep records properly, serve nutritious meals, and provide quality instructional assistance. And whereas school support personnel use their knowledge and skills to make sure students get the most out of every school day, and our schools cannot operate without them. And whereas paraprofessionals in our schools are important contributors in the effort to maintain a safe environment for both students and staff, and play a central role in responding to any threat to the smooth and safe operation of district campuses and departments. And whereas SBCSC joins in this important observance and in supporting the invaluable role paraprofessional personnel play throughout the district in providing quality services that enable students to learn in a positive, safe, and supportive environment. And whereas SBCSC acknowledges paraprofessional personnel as equal and essential partners in the education process. Therefore, we, the School Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, as National Paraprofessional Day in South Bend, to recognize the many great services paraprofessionals provide to students and staff of the South Bend Community School Corporation. Attested to this day, April 15th, 2020, signed Dr. C. Todd Cummings Superintendent and John Anella, School Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Montrose. Now, Ms. Ball, the Assistant Principal Week Resolution?
Yes. Assistant Principal's Week Proclamation, April 6th through 10th, 2020. Whereas assistant principals play an integral role in the education and growth of children in elementary, middle, and high schools of the South Bend Community School Corporation, and whereas assistant principals are responsible for promoting education and building relationships with parents and teachers to ensure each child receives services that meet their needs to excel in the classroom. And whereas the primary responsibility of the South Bend Community School Corporation is to preserve and improve resources for schools so all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And whereas educational leaders face many challenges in supporting and educating our young people, and is, and it is through their perseverance and passion, the South Bend Community School Corporation continues to produce quality college and career-ready students. And whereas we must continue to encourage, support, and recognize those who have a positive impact on the South Bend Community School Corporation students and educational system in South Bend, Indiana. Therefore, I, John Anella, President of the Board of School Trustees, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through 10th, 2020, as Assistant Principals' Week in the South Bend Community School Corporation to recognize assistant principals for all they do to help our students learn and succeed. Attested to this day, April 15th, 2020, Dr. C. Todd Cummings Superintendent, John Anella, School Board President.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Thank you, Mr. Montrose. Mr. Anella, that's the end of our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, back to you Superintendent announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Anella. A few Superintendent announcements. First, I want to say thank you for this historic first virtual board meeting in the history of South Bend Community Schools. I want to thank our technology department. I want to thank the staff at WETL, who has worked tirelessly to make sure that today happens. I want to say thank you for your flexibility for, for board members. I also want to think, take a moment to say hello to my parents who are watching the, uh, the, uh, my first school board meeting virtually. And I want to just say thank you to all the folks who worked together to make tonight happen. Also, our next electronic talks with Todd, we just did our first virtual talks with Todd on Tuesday, and it was a great success, and it was a great deal of fun. And the next one that we'll be doing is Tuesday, May 5th. The referendum has been postponed until Election Day, June 2nd. We are asking everyone to get their mail-in ballots by May 21st. I just got mine, and my great assistant, Ms. Gabby, just got hers. And so, easy process to do, and so we encourage everyone to get their mail-in ballots. The South Bend Educational Foundation Great Friends of School Breakfast, which was originally scheduled on May 20th, has been canceled. We have free counseling for South Bend school employees and Empowerment Zone employees and their families. We will be sending out a link both in our communication newsletter on Friday, as well as posting a link on our website for folks to take advantage of. We have new hours for Chromebook repairs and Edison Tech Services. Those are now Wednesdays from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. This week, we concluded being a one-to-one district. Every household K through 12 now has an electronic device, and I want to say thank you to our technology department who made that happen. Um, I'll say it again later, but thank you, Dr. Green, for your vision and your leadership of the Technology Committee that has gotten us to this point. Thank you very much. The number for tech services is 574-393-970. And then I also want to say a very special thank you to our facilities folk. Steve Miskin, Mike Semansky, to our Communications Department, to our magnet school at Washington. We were able to donate medical equipment to our Department of Health to offset the needs of our first responders, and I want to say thank you to everyone who came together for that. So that is the end of Superintendent announcement. Mr. Anella?
Okay, thank you. I had to hit the unmute button. Uh, now we're on to academic focus, COVID-19 district update, and I believe that will stay with you, Dr. Cummings.
Yes, let me share my screen. So this evening, we wanted to share our COVID-19 Emergency Wave 2 response and let the community and board know fully where we are and currently what we're working on. I wanted to remind everyone what our theory of action was as we entered the COVID-19 process. First, it was to use health data to make all decisions to keep students, staff, and families safe, to provide basic needs for our most vulnerable students and families, food, laundry, the internet, to continue academic pursuit through e-learning, and finally, to mitigate the economic impact on our families and our staff. The board agreed to pay all workers and to give folks as much advance notice as possible. And I want to stop here, and I want to say before we do the rest of the presentation, I want to say a very special thank you to our Board of School Trustees through all the national press on Wi-Fi buses, through paying your employees, through your support of e-learning. None of where we would be now without your unanimous support, and so the staff want, and families want to say thank you. We fed nearly 110,000 meals since school's been closed, and none of this would have been impossible, would have been possible without the extraordinary leadership of all seven board members, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for your, for your leadership. So I want to talk about a few e-learning adjustments that we made, and while I won't go through all of this, I wanted everyone to notice a couple of things. Number one, we are currently a one-to-one district K through 12. Every household K through 12 now has an device in order to e-learn. All e-learning is now being done on Chromebooks and devices. We are currently providing 44 wireless access spots on our buses throughout South Bend. We are ensuring that all of our students have access to the internet. Students in grades nine through 12 are also offered internet hotspots through the Sprint 1 Million Project. Thank you to Ms. Tessa, Mr. Taylor Williams for helping make that happen. We've also worked really hard with the Department of Education to ensure students and families that grades will not go backwards during e-learning. We're working out a process and a mechanism that e-learning will not count against our, our students. We're also working on getting much more granular with our attendance. In logging in attendance, we find that we have nearly 90% of our students logging in. That leaves 10% that we're not, from whom we're not hearing. And we'll discuss the plan of how we're calling families. Principals are calling students. Our bilingual department is contacting their students in order to make sure that we're reaching every single student and that there are no needs that they have that are keeping them from the internet or from e-learning. We have transitioned all of our professional development for our teachers and staff strictly to e-learning and strictly to electronic and campus, and canvas-based. We look going forward as we look at summer in 2021, that this is a platform that we can provide professional learning for all of our staff and all of our teachers. We've worked really hard with the Indiana Department of Education to remind teachers that grading should not be punitive. Teachers, we want you to focus on grades that reflect students' ability and mastery. We are ensuring equity for our students, especially those who may be lacking resources and support, and that we're concentrating on providing meaningful feedback for all of our students. But I want to ensure families and students, especially those seniors, your grades will not suffer because of e-learning. Highlighting a few things with special education, we're doing weekly check-ins with teaching and therapy staff. We're doing continuous learning with special education resources on our website. We're continuing to schedule annual case conferences, and we're contacting and communicating with our special needs families. Julia Gerule has done an outstanding job in bilingual services. They have contacted nearly 2,000 of their families to ensure that they're not having technical issues, that they're completing attendance requirements, and that they're successfully logging into e-learning. And I specifically want to say thank you to Ms. Gerule Cordova and her staff. Specifically, they have opened up Rosetta Stone to all of our Level 1 students, our DLI students. We've offered Rosetta Stone to teachers. We've received an additional 10,000 licenses. I, the other day, even signed on to Rosetta Stone for the first time. So we're encouraging everyone to e-learn, but we're making sure that we're offering this to our students and our families and our teachers, and I'm really grateful for the work that she and her staff are, have done. While we're not in school, we can't ignore the social, emotional learning needs of our students, and Ms. Tessa, our Chief Equity Officer, and Stephanie Stewart-Bridges, um, also in our Equity Office, have done an amazing job putting together resources for our families. We're providing SEL supports to students during e-learning. We're engaging students in individual and group sessions. We're providing face-to-face supports around mindfulness, feelings, and emotions. We have media testimonies from our parents regarding the SEL services that we're providing. We have a weekly website registration for virtual parent involvement, and we're continuing to collaborate and encourage and promote our 21st century scholars. We're providing check-in for our families. We're encouraging family engagement. We're supporting high school learners, and our Equity Office is fostering social, emotional learning, and I'm very grateful for the work that they're doing. Testing updates, ILEARN, IREAD 3, ISAP Plus FPA have all been canceled for 2019, 2020. SAT exams from March through May have been canceled, along with IB exams, and AP exams are currently being administered virtually and at home. Human Resources, I just show this so you can see how our process has already started changing. Teacher job fairs and how our hiring is going to be done is now going to be done virtually. We'll likely not be able to hire folks in person, but our human capital team has pivoted to make sure that we can do all of our hiring for the positions that we have virtually. Summer School, I get asked a lot of questions about summer school, and while we're waiting on some state guidance, here's what we know. Summer School for El, for elementary students will be expanded to all elementary sites. We are going to focus on literacy. It will be a blended learning model. As of this moment, it will be primarily virtual, and we're asking ourselves the question, how can we ensure that students who have slid during this time can be caught up? We believe this is a terrific opportunity to support students and teachers with one-on-one technology, ensuring that their reading scores can improve. We, every K through 12 household has Chromebooks. Administrators at our buildings are reaching out, making sure that students who aren't being successful with e-learning can be connected to summer school. And I want to talk about a golden opportunity that our staff has decided that since everyone has a Chromebook, we are launching an opportunity to ensure with online college cred, online high school credit, that every single one of our students, for the first time ever, is on track to graduate. Food Services. This week, we used our data, and we went to a bulk food distribution. So we're continuing to monitor that data to see if we like it, if it's working for our families, if it's as efficient as possible. This is the schedule of our meal distribution along with our Wi-Fi routes. So three days of food, then four days of food. The USDA has given us the ability to feed our students, not just Monday through Friday, but for seven days. So you are currently providing food for students seven days a week, including weekends. So like I said earlier, uh, as of last Friday, we fed nearly 110,000 meals. Uh, we've joined the St. Joseph County Food Initiative because we know that it's not just our students who are hungry and who have food needs, but also their older brothers and sisters and their, and their families. Um, we also have received two FEMA grants. One is a gen, a gen youth COVID grant, and also a No Kid Hungry Grant. So for $28,000, it'll go to feeding our, our students and our, and our families. We're moving our summer serving programs, dinner, and weekends, and I want to specifically say thank you to Cultivate, who are supplementing our households with food for folks who are over 18. So when students come and get their food, food for the weekend, Cultivate is also coming alongside us and feeding the other members of the household, and I can't be more grateful for the work that they're doing. We still have a fantastic collaboration with Burton's Laundry that is allowing families and students to do laundry on Wednesdays from 10:00 to uh, students or families, if you would like to be part of that program, please let your social worker or principal, principal know. A bit about the CARES Act. So what we know that we're going to receive from the CARES Act is based on our Title I formula. And so we anticipate that what we're going to receive will be roughly about $7.1 million. That includes the zone, it includes non-public, it includes indirect costs. Currently, we're considering how we use this money to expand summer school for elementary and middle school students, specifically to eliminate the COVID-19 slide, to expand one-to-one devices to ensure that we are K through 12 per family, ensuring solid tier-one instruction for our students as we begin next year, whatever that might mean. We have to use some of our time technologically, but how do we make sure every student gets off on the right track? And we're also working with the zone. The zone is an employer of under 500. How do we help them get additional CARES Act funding? So our team is working with them to ensure that we get everything that we possibly can to support our students out of the CARES Act. Since we have been closed for the past three weeks, we wanted to do an estimate of what we believe we've saved. So from overtime funds, from class coverage, from substitutes, and I do want to say something about substitutes. While we did not pay substitutes because they're not our employees, they were encouraged to file for unemployment, so they do have income coming in. So athletic field pain, truck tires, trash pickup. Currently, in the nearly four weeks we've been closed, we've estimated that we've saved about $1.6 million. I also want to say a very special thank you for, to the Education Foundation. We haven't talked a lot about this publicly, but I want to say thank you to the foundation now. When we knew that we were going to be closed and the businesses and restaurants were closing, we knew that we had students who were supporting their families from their restaurant and business work. We asked the foundation if they could help us raise money that would provide gift cards that would support families who were relying on the students for support. And so I can report as of today, the foundation and Dean Moore have raised nearly $11,000 for, to pass out gift cards to students who are working to support their families with gift cards coming, uh, from Meyer. And I want to say specifically thank you to the foundation for doing that. There's a link on our website if folks would like to continue to give. That will be an ongoing need. As businesses don't open, our students who have been working need paychecks, and they need paychecks to support their families. And so, families, if your student qualifies for that, please let your social worker or principal know, and then they will put you on the list, and you can pick your gift cards up at Brown. I am so proud of what the foundation has allowed us to do, to support our families. And the foundation is also committed to 10 additional Wi-Fi buses to be Wi-Fi-enabled. Through the board's leadership, and like I said earlier, none of what we've done, none of what we've done, computers, Wi-Fi buses, feeding nearly 110,000 meals would be possible without your leadership and your support. But we also have found out that other folks are taking notice of what we've done. These are a few of the sites nationally that have reached out to us about what we're doing. They include Forbes, Bloomberg, District Administration. And I just want to say thank you to you and your leadership. Thank you, our communications team, for their hard work, but the things we're doing right now for families are focused on educating our students, focused on supporting our teachers, and focused on community engagement, and I'm, I'm very proud. I want to talk just a little bit about looking ahead, some hot topics that we hear both on Facebook and in emails. Graduation. Let me talk directly to seniors and their families. We have not canceled graduation. There is nothing more exciting about the school year than graduation. We have made no final decisions. This week, there is a survey that we are launching to our seniors that we're asking for their feedback. We had yet another meeting with principals today. Last week, we had a meeting with principals and seniors asking for their input. So seniors, please watch for your survey and continue with your social media input. We have had lots of great ideas. Sit tight. We're working with the governor's office and the Department of Education to make our decision, but we haven't canceled anything yet. Your caps and gowns are still at your school, and we're working really hard to get your input to make the right decision. Credit Recovery. This week, I gave a directive to ensure that with one-to-one technology, that we guarantee that every single one of our high school students is on track to graduate for the first time ever before we return to school in the fall. We're going to make sure seniors are on track to graduate this year, and when we return to school in the fall, we're going to make sure all of our students are on track to graduate. We're piloting blended learning programs in CTE. We are working hard to align with our pathways to have blended programs that support after-school programs. We're expanding our Rise Up CTE classes at Rise Up, and we're expanding our Associate Degree Program for next year. Looking ahead for 2021, we've started to ask the questions, how will we be ready? What programs are no- What programs are no longer important or valuable to us? What doesn't move, educating every single one of our students and engaging our families forward? How will we keep students and staff safe when they re-enter our buildings? Do we have enough masks? Do we have enough hand sanitizer? How can technology enhance our course offerings and create more opportunities for all of our students? We're seeing it in small ways and we want to see it in larger ways. And then finally, teacher evaluations. We're taking guidance from the state. We're meeting with our teachers later this week to finalize how we're going to collaborate and work together with teacher evaluations. That's the end of my presentation. I'll take any, any board questions that that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. And just again, we'd all like to thank you, your team, and all the employees, the food service workers, the pairs, the bus drivers, the teachers, the principals, the build, all the building engineers, facilities. Everyone has pitched in to rise to the challenge of this. And frankly, again, we couldn't be more proud of the work that South Bend Schools is doing right now. And I'll open it up to anyone else.
I do. Oh, okay, sure. Yeah. Thank you, Leslie. I do have a question, Dr. Cummings. You, in that last slide, you indicated what programs are no longer valuable. Can you give us a little insight as to what metrics you're going to use to evaluate a program that's not viable?
We're having those conversations and those are some guiding questions that I've asked my cabinet members and staff to start thinking about. And initially, I would say the metrics are what isn't serving all of our students? What gets in our way of opening up more opportunities for students? Are there things that we're using our time on that could be better used serving more of our students? So we haven't identified any programs and those are our guiding questions as we, as we continue to work through this. But we're seeing that places we've spent our time may not be as valuable when we can utilize technology, when we can guarantee students are on track to graduate. How can we be innovative? How can we use technology to make sure that we're reaching more of our students? And so those are the kinds of questions that we've, we've started to ask and guide our work.
Did I follow a question? I'm sorry, do you have a particular deadline if you establish internally to kind of figure out what those metrics are, those conversations? So that internally you have a chance to talk to your staff and then come back to the board with recommendations?
Yes, so we know that we have a shortened timeline because we're already looking ahead. And of course, no one has a crystal ball. And if you read a lot of, if you read educational journals and research, there's colleges already talking about not coming back in 2021. And so we're trying already to make decisions based on what fall might look like. And while we're having those conversations quickly, we haven't set an eternal deadline. But I imagine after we have the specifics of summer school done, that we'll start coming up with when we need to make, make our decisions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, um, thank you, Ms. Paul, for that, for that question. That was, that was a good question. I'd like to say to Dr. Cummings, to you and to the staff, all of the accolades that I've been receiving from the community and from parents and community partners and stakeholders, that you all have done a tremendous job. And so hats off to you and as the leader of the school corporation. We really do appreciate the fact that you have thought about the whole family, the child and the whole family and the partnerships that you've established. And so I just wanted to say hats off to you, especially the Technology Department for being able to get the one-to-one. I think we've been leading the, the charge here in South Bend, just based on looking at some of the other numbers throughout the whole state. So some of the school districts that still don't have the one-to-one. So just like to say thank you and to all your staff, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else?
Mr. Anella.
Yes, Dr. Warren.
Um, that is, that was a really comprehensive presentation, Dr. Cummings. I appreciated the detail that you presented about the results of what you've done. I have a particular question about credit recovery. You know, having students on track to graduate has also some, something to do with how far away they are from that goal. So for example, if they're 17 years old and they only have seven credits, that's going to be really difficult to do. So do you have a, do you have a map or some kind of a plan? So, you know, if you're only two credits away from graduation, that's an easy fix. But the longer, the farther away you are, the more difficult it is to overcome that hurdle. So I'm sure you've talked about that with your staff, but I just wonder if you could give us more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. That's an excellent question and one that we have considered. We do know that if you need two credits, that's easy to do this summer. What happens to the student who needs 17 by, by June? We know that students have to want to do that themselves. And so as we unroll how we're going to do this, we're going to, we're going to contact those students. We can't force our students to be graduate, graduation ready. But we're at least going to make sure that we work with principals and guidance counselors to reach out to them to see what obstacles are in their way, to ascertain if they even want to do that, because it's, it's a lot of work. And we also know that that tends to work better with a hybrid model when you have an adult, even virtually, that you can touch base with. So while we may not get 100%, we're hoping that we can eliminate the obstacles for those students. Because we were having a conversation this week and I said, why is it that on a Tuesday, six weeks before graduation, the superintendent and his cabinet are talking about a student who needs 17 credits? Something's wrong in the process. And so we have to look at the process. How did we get to that point? And what support do we offer for those students? We can't make them do it, but I think those students who are far away need some real specific, some real specific support. So we, we talked about how, how we're going to layer that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Anyone else? One other thing, Dr. Cummings, I forgot to mention was the Communications Department. And I know you highlighted that and they've done a wonderful job with all the positive press. And how many people have come up to me and talked about the buses and the feeding kids? And it's not just locally, but it's been a national story too. So congratulations to, to you and your team and everyone else in the Communications Department as well.
And our, our communications team, if you look, I mean, if you go back and look at that slide, which we'll post after the presentation, Susan G. Bear, those are Forbes, Bloomberg, those are, are weighty national publications. And she and her team have done a terrific job framing, focusing, running down leads. And so I'm grateful for them. And while I'm here, I also want to say that they didn't assign food to her. But our CFO, Karima Fowler, Food and Nutrition and Chartwells is in her department. And the fact that we have fed 110,000 meals, that she and Renee Sanchez are connected to a bigger consortium of how to feed families and that they have worked with Cultivate to ensure that it's not just our students we're feeding, but that we're providing food for the whole family. As a superintendent, I have goosebumps. I mean, there's, there's nothing more we can do that's greater than educate our students and feed them. And I'm so proud of the work that our, our team has done and, and, and they've moved heaven and earth to make it happen. I'm, I'm very grateful for all of them. Mr. Montrose, I see you had your hand up.
Yes, I, I wanted to echo my colleagues' comments that the feedback that we've been getting from the community that many of us have been hearing is very positive. I mean, it's clear when you take a look at the South Bend School Community Corporation, that we're a member of this community here at St. Joseph County and here in the state that, that we're a member and that we're leaders and that the impact that we make in our community and our schools, rather, it has an impact that is made on the community. So I wanted to thank you for your forward thinking. You know, all these things didn't just happen overnight. We have prepared for this, perhaps not for this crisis, but we were prepared to be able to implement e-learning. We were prepared, even when Martha Robles sat in my seat years ago, may she rest in peace, that she, it was a priority of hers to make it one-to-one. And now we see the fruits of that labor and why it was important to follow through with that. So I wanted to thank you for that. So I had two questions. One was if you, I wonder if you might be able to comment on our attendance of our students as we're going through this, through this pandemic? And then two, how can members from the community continue to contribute to the Education Foundation?
Excellent questions. And I want to just say thank you to Dr. Green. When Dr. Green took on the Technology Committee, when he first came on the board and you've been at it now for nearly two years, had you not handed off all that work and had you not gotten the district ready for e-learning, we would not be in this spot now. And for you and your team, I certainly want to say, want to say thank you. All that groundwork had been laid. And to board members who approved contracts to put wifi on buses this summer so that our students could work on their devices when they traveled home and when they went to athletic events. Little did you know that you would be providing wifi for nearly the entire community. And so I, I certainly want to say thank you, both to Dr. Green, the Technology Committee, but to the board for their forward, forward thinking. They, we will post a link, there is a link on, we will put the link on our website where folks can still donate to the Educational Foundation and specifically to the gift card program. And I also want to say thank you to Dean Moore. He has been at Brown. And Ms. Wesley, you know, today, sitting in the snow outside, passing out gift cards to families. And I want to say thank you to him. He has taken this on, he's made his personal mission. With his leadership, we raised nearly $11,000 in three weeks. And I want to say thank you to Martins as well. But today and every day, nice ones, and today in the snow, he set out and he's met, he's met those families. But we will make sure that we put the link on, I'm looking at George Jones now, we'll make sure we put the link to that on our website so folks can continue. Thank you.
I have the question with regard to our attendance records.
Oh, sorry, thank you. So our attendance early on was measured by students simply logging in. And Dr. Green, Rafi, Matt Modlin, I, we've had ongoing conversations about that. We need to be able to measure more granularly than just logging on and enter a captcha. So Rafi's been working on specific work per class. And the, the early data I sent to the board yesterday shows the work that Rafi has done. And we're going to do our best to get granular because we want to make sure that students are logging on, but they're actually doing their work. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about, excuse me, is that principals and our academic department is contacting the 10% of students that, from whom we're not hearing. So we want to make sure that there's not an obstacle that's getting in their way, that we don't need to move a wifi bus. They don't have technology issues. So we're grateful for the 90%. We want to get more granular with it, but we also want to make sure that we're equitably addressing the 10% and that we're not leaving them behind. So the data I shared this week, 90% logging in, we're trying to get more granular per class. Who's actually showing up for class?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments, Mr. Anella. I want to punctuate some of the things that Dr. Cummings and others have made. And one of which is, you know, the concern for equity. I think that a crisis like this that we're experiencing opens up a host of problems. And we're altogether aware of what supports families need. Not just children in schools, but the food, housing, making sure that people are paid even though they, they may not be working. I mean, the unpaid leave is a, is a big issue. So I really do appreciate the way the corporation has come together to ensure that families are getting what they need. It's really quite outstanding. I also want, you know, to mention, and of course, to thank Dr. Cummings for calling out some of the names of people like Matt Monlan and Pat Stalvi and Seth Ponder and, and others who have worked tirelessly for the last year to make e-learning a part of the corporation's response to this crisis. It'd be hard to imagine if we hadn't gotten started a year ago. And I mean, a lot of credit goes to the teachers. We're learning, we learned at the recent Technology Committee meeting, the thousands of hours that teachers have spent responding to children and families to make sure that kids are getting everything they need. And the principals who are holding meetings all day long with teachers and the professional development, you know, opportunities that have occurred to make sure that teachers are getting what they need. I've just been so impressed with the compassion, kindness, generosity and innovation that teachers and their principals, you know, have demonstrated throughout this entire process. But also I want to indicate that, you know, that there's a lot of good news in looking at the number of hours, again, thousands of hours that our teachers have spent with their, with parents and with caregivers as well as the children. But that also speaks to the amount of work they've been doing. And I think it would be unfortunate to overlook just how much work teachers are doing. Some would say they're probably, as they're shifting to this new platform, it's much more work than what occurs during the normal year. And this all is a work in progress. I think Dr. Cummings has pointed out that there are a lot of working parts and we're trying to figure things out. So that, you know, as, as teachers spend four days a week on e-learning, with all the time they're spending, they don't always have the time to respond to their students. And this is something I think we need to think about is what will work in the best interest of kids, but also what will work in the best interest of, of teachers? So I don't know what exactly the answer is, but I, again, I want to emphasize the point that there have been so many people who have come together, but that teachers and principals have devoted so much time to make sure whether it's 90% of our, we're reaching 90% of our kids or even just perhaps less, no matter how we're measuring this. Equity has been the forefront of every meeting we've had with the Technology Committee. And the fact that that is first and foremost on people's minds is something really to be applauded.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And of course, I always feel like somebody gets forgotten, but we can't forget our Curriculum Department, Dr. Dvetsky and everyone in that department who obviously is doing a ton of work with the e-learning and also the Technology Department, Patrick Stalvi and his team as well. So there's a lot of people and if someone, if I forgot someone or we forgot someone, please just send us a nasty email.
Just like, I'd just like to say real quickly that George Jones is, and I can't remember the other young lady at the beginning of the, the whole infrastructure. I'd like to commend George Jones for taking the lead on working on this, on your stat team the weekend before we released everybody from school. So hats off to George Jones for taking that lead and for spending that, I call it the next 72 hours of making sure that he stayed in communications with, with the social media outlets and being a part of your infrastructure. So thank you, George Jones.
Thank you. Ms. Wesley, we're thinking of Monica Leas, so.
Monica, yes, Monica and George. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cummings. We really appreciate it. There's a lot of ground to cover. It almost seems like there's more to cover with everything going on. But again, the school corp has really risen to the challenge and, and we're very thankful for that. So thank you.
Amen.
Okay, moving on to hearing of visitors. I believe, Mr. Monterosa, do we have anyone signed up to speak on action agenda items?
No.
Okay, I don't have to read the disclaimer, which I guess they're not actually speaking anyway, but you would, you would, you'd probably know how to edit it. We're reading it. Okay, moving on, consent agenda. 9.01 through 9.06. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the attached consent agenda, which includes accepting any attached financial reports and statements under 9.01, approving any attached consolidated register, registers of claims and distributions of payroll for payment under item 9.02, approving personnel decisions listed on attached reports under item 9.03, adopting any attached resolutions under item 9.04, which there are none, accepting any gifts to the corporation and approving any fundraisers described in any attached reports under 9.05. And then again, approving or ratifying any contracts for $50,000 or less under 9.06, which there are none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? See, that was moved by Ms. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Monterosa?
Yes.
And all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Against. Okay, we've approved. Okay, we've approved the consent agenda. Moving on to action agenda items, 10.01. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees adopt the amendments to Board Policy 1662, anti-harassment indicated in the attached document. Do we have a motion to approve 10.01?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Monterosa and seconded by Ms. Wesley. And I see Mr. Kubicki's face on the screen now. So obviously he has a few things to say about this policy 1662 that we've discussed previously. Go ahead, Mr. Kubicki.
Really not much to add, other than that this is the second time it's come before the board as required by board policies. We need a first reading, a second reading, or it needs, before we can vote on it. So this is the opportunity to vote on it. Just as a reminder to everyone, this is a slight amendment to our anti-harassment policy to clarify that coaches and sponsors of clubs and those types of things are covered or required to, to follow the anti-harassment policies as well. So that's the primary clarification in that policy.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Okay, no one's jumping at the, jumping at the bit to ask a question, so we've done this a couple of times. So seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of approving 10.01, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, we've approved an anti-harassment policy. Next is 10.02. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the job description and posting for Director of Transportation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Let's see, moved by Ms. Ball and seconded by Ms. Wesley. I see, Dr. Cummings, you want to give us some, nope, I see Mr. Sanchez has popped up on my screen. Why don't you give us a little background on this position?
So this position is one that, that came open in early October, and we've been managing so far this school year to take care of transportation, but now it's time for us to find somebody to, who can take the reins at this point. And so the job description is virtually the same, except since it is a director level, we went ahead and added the skills and competencies we expect from all of our other directors as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any questions, comments? Guys, Dr. Cummings raised his hand first. Technically, I don't have to let you speak, but go ahead.
No, and I'm grateful. I do want to say that we hired Rene Sanchez in August and immediately gave him HR, transportation, and all the other operations duties. And so it's time for us to find a great Director of Transportation. It's going to be a really tough, there, there are really big shoes to fill. He's done a great job, I think, when we go to talks with Todd and we go to our referendum forums, everyone will agree, transportation's improved that much. And we, we want to see it continue to improve for our students, but I specifically want to say thank you to him who's been doing at least three jobs in, in his time here.
Thank you. I, I saw Ms. Ball had her hand up. Ms. Ball, you have a comment, question?
Yes, I have a question. So I saw the salary range that was posted for the job description. So Renee, I'm just going to ask this, is that salary range based on, you know, statistics from other similar sized districts? Is it, because I think about what transportation means and of course, all the headaches and what have you that we endured and all the work that needs to be done, is that a fair representation of a, of a pay range for a Director of Transportation for a school corporation of our size?
So I know that there are school districts that are around Indianapolis that are smaller than we are, that their, their range is actually higher.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess my only comment, I thought it was low, personally. I mean, clearly I don't have the, the, the data, statistic, whatever. I, yeah, I'm a parent. I got three students who ride buses or don't ride buses sometimes to the schools. And so I was concerned about that, that, that pay range. I'd like to see it higher, but again, I don't have all the, probably all the necessary information.
So what I can't say is that it is comparable to other director positions within South Bend schools.
Okay, well, it would be nice to have it be competitive with other districts and if we have to make an adjustment to get somebody, then, you know, we'd have to be willing to entertain that.
If, if you don't mind, Ms. Ball, couldn't we make sure that we've checked with other neighboring districts just to make sure that we're in, in the right ballpark? And if we need to come back for, to raise that, then we'll come back to the board, we'll approve the job description as it is, we'll take Ms. Ball's recommendation, Mr. Ranelle's recommendation, we'll contact other larger urbans, both in Indiana and even America, because we move a lot of students every day and see if that's worth getting folks to come and stay, if, if that's okay.
Absolutely. We've had a couple of issues with transportation over the years, to say the least. So getting the most qualified person is definitely worth it. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, Ms. Wesley, did you have a comment? I saw you. Nope. Okay. I've seen no other discussion. All those in favor of approving 10.02, please say aye.
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 All those against? Okay, we have no nays. So we approved a job description for Director of Transportation. Now we're on to items from closed session. We had no closed session, so now we're on to hearing of visitors, comments by the public on other items. And I believe, Mr. Monterosa, do you have any comments that were submitted?
Yes. So we're doing things a little differently. Dr. Cummings, I, I guess I'll just reiterate what you had indicated prior to our meeting, that there have been questions that were submitted to the board that will be answered later this week. And today what I'll be doing is I'll be reading the comments that the public has submitted for the hearing of visitors. So I'll begin with Jessica, and I, I apologize for my mispronounced last, Hanzewski, A-Z-E-W-S-K-I. She submitted a comment and indicates, "Today I took my lunch at 11:30 to drive her over to noonner to pick up food for my three kids. I sat in line for about 15 minutes. Once they got to the car in front of me, they ran out of food and it wasn't even noon. You've changed the pickup times to accommodate less interaction between people, but have not provided the amount of food that would be needed for these kids. I was told I could go to another school to pick up food, but as I said, I was on lunch. What can we do to make sure this doesn't happen to other parents with kids?" The next comment comes from Emily Milovich, M-I-L-O-V-I-C-H. Actually, those were questions, the subject line was misleading. But well, Ms. Milovich will be answering those questions later this week. This one is from Lisa Nappenberger, K-N-A-P-P-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. The IDOE has said that high schools will not give pass slash fill grades. Has it been determined how grades are to be handled for high school concerning the fourth The next comment was from A.J. Morrow, M-O-R-R, or excuse me, J-M-O-R-R-O-W. Katie Kennedy Schaefer had made a comment, I guess was a summary of comments that were made on the South Bend School Corporation Facebook page, and they wanted us to share before the board today. The first comment was, "Please let the schools reopen in May." Daira Delaney, D-E-L-A-N-E-Y indicated, "Please have administrators look out for all employees at all levels and have appreciation for those that have helped and personally to their time to put themselves out there for the student's well-being." Roxy Zamora, Z-A-M-O-R-A, shared a comment, "It's okay if they don't come back to school until next year because the U.S. is the second most infected in the world next to Italy. And if a student is infected and they don't show any of the symptoms, they can infect more students in the school. Have a good day." That was the last of the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monterosa. I know we're not technically doing Q and A, but Dr. Cummings, maybe you could address, you know, I know you mentioned it before, but the food pickup question and then the end of the semester grade question. Since people asked, we might as well answer them.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. This is the first week that we have transitioned to bulk food delivery. We did redirect folks to additional sites. What we should have done also is redirect them to Kennedy. Kennedy is our late afternoon site, open from 2 to 4. And so we have reached out, I believe she contacted us on Facebook, and if not, I'll personally respond to that question tomorrow and we'll make sure that we give her the items that she, she needs. We made additional food today. We want to be sure that we're covering everyone and not get into the place where folks aren't getting what they, what they need or what we promised them. And so we adjusted our data. We're going to keep looking at our bulk food data this week, and I don't want to sound skeptical in bulk food, but we're taking a look at our data to see how it's really going. Is it really serving our families well? But I apologize that she had that, had that issue. And today, we made sure that that, that wouldn't happen again. Cabinet members were out monitoring sites, we'll continue that this week, and so we'll make sure that we, we don't have that issue again. I believe the other question was about grading. We, our academic team, Dr. Susan Dvetsky is working with her team, and we're still working with the state of Indiana to come up with a protocol of how we're going to sign grades. Like I said earlier, it's really important, and I want especially my seniors to know that e-learning will not significantly impact your grades in a negative way. And so that came from the, the Department of Education. And so we're working with principals on how we're going to record that, because we also have to transcript those grades so students can go to college. So it's still a process that we're, that we're working on. Were there, were there others? Were those the only two?
No, those were the two, and then any other ones you can always address.
And we'll, I'll have my assistant look at the email box tomorrow, we'll make sure we answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing of visitors is complete. We're now on to board communications. The board has opportunity to speak at this time. Anyone have any comments?
You know, I have, just, just wouldn't be right if I didn't say that I appreciate all of the staff, all of our teachers, our bus drivers. I've had the opportunity to go out and help distribute lunches, and so I just really appreciate the nutrition department, those who are on the front line right now, those bus drivers that are out there on the front line that are, those essential workers, our, our maintenance staff, our drivers, the maintenance drivers, our custodians, I mean, everybody, teachers that are, you know, making those phone calls and, and working with those students and administrators that are holding down those building still staff, but the, the students, I'm very proud of all of our students that are taking the initiative to get up every morning and, and be involved in e-learning. And those parents that are, have turned their living rooms and kitchen tables and everything into classrooms, parents, we just appreciate you. And just lastly, administration, again, Dr. Cummings to you and your administration downtown, just a huge thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else?
I would like to say, yeah. I'm very impressed, and you know, it does feel good, I mean, you have a parent or an employee say that we really appreciate what you're doing. So to Dr. Cummings and South Bend schools, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Ranelle?
Yes, Dr. Warren?
I have two requests to make of the listening audience. One is, I was looking at the personnel list and really saddened by the number of retirements that I see from people that I know are very good teachers. And while I wish them well in their retirement, it's just sad to see them go. So I want to say to people who are listening, you know, at the end of the year, often we would have retirement parties for people that were leaving, and these people are going to be leaving with no celebrations from the people, from the students, from their colleagues. So please reach out to them, send them texts, make them, make phone calls, send them cards, and thank them for their many, many years of service to South Bend. It's just really important that we not let them ride off into the sunset without acknowledging their contribution. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I wanted to say something about the status of voting in St. Joseph County. This primary election is going to be really important to the South Bend Community Schools, and I want to let the public know a couple of things about the situation about voting. First of all, the changes to the voting procedure. Last election, there were 150 polls open. In this election, there will only be 10. So we're going from 150 in-person polls to 10. That's why it's really, really, really important that people do absentee voting. We don't want to get in the same situation that Wisconsin had where we had these enormous lines with long, long waits. So please, please fill out the absentee ballot, and I am going to tell you how to do that because I don't think we can say it often enough. First, you have to be registered by May 4th. And sometimes some funny things happen with voter registration, so you should go in and check that you're still registered to vote at indianavoters.com. Also, if you have a student or know a student who's going to be 18 by June 2nd, make sure that they get registered to vote, they can do that online. Some people think that it's automatic at vote, at the License Bureau. I think that you have to agree to have it done. I don't think it's automatic, but you could still check to see if your student is registered to vote. Then after you're registered to vote, you have to request an absentee ballot. There's two ways to do that. One is to call the clerk's office at 574-235-1812. I've that number memorized. They will send you an application, fill it out. This time, there's no, we don't need a reason to absentee, to vote absentee, so if you see the list of reasons, I personally got to check over 65, but you know, not everybody does, so there's, you don't have to have a reason, you can just leave that blank. So you can call and get it, or you can go to indianavoters.com, download it, fill it out. It must be signed though, so you have to print it and sign it, mail it back to the county clerk, and then you'll, then they'll mail you the absentee ballot. And finally, when you get your ballot, bubble your choice, sign the envelope with the same name as is on your ballot and send it back in. So you see, it's a multi-step process, and so for some, you know, that may be too many hurdles to overcome, but it's very, very important because we really want to minimize the in-person voting on June 2nd. So that is my speech.
Thank you. And Dr. Warren, there's still a possibility that we may not even have in-person voting, correct?
Well, the election board is meeting on April 22nd, and that, they could decide that then, but what I've been told is it's very unlikely that that will happen, that we will, in other words, we will still have in-person voting, and partly because some of the counties wouldn't be prepared to have, to not have in-person voting. So, so the more people can get their ballots and get them in, the better it will be.
Thank you, and then keep, keep updating us. So we appreciate that. And if somebody needs a yard sign, just so you know, that if they request, I'll personally deliver it while wearing my South Bend school's hat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Anyone else?
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Ball?
Hello there. I, I just wanted to make a statement about, or made a request about being aware of our students and staff and really just families' mental health at this time. I've seen some things on Facebook and, you know, just kind of, again, personally, just working with students and families, it's just a historic and different time that if we could perhaps lean on our MSWs, our social workers to reach out to students, or in some kind of way, if we could do some kind of resource sheet to make available through the Peachtree emails or the principals' messages. or the principals' messages. I mean, I know I get the principals' messages and I get those Peachtree emails, but if we could come up with like a, um, a quick fact sheet or resource sheet in regards to that, because they, they, this is a, a dynamic that we've never experienced before. And, um, just to make sure that our families have those resources available where they know where they can call if they need it, uh, mental health counseling and, uh, mental health, mental health services.
Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that, Ms. Ball. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Monterosa? You're on mute. Turn on your mic.
Uh, yes, the wonders of technology. Um, I'd like to commend our building leaders, our principals, teachers, staff, and especially our students as we've come together to face this global pandemic. Our homes have become work sites and schools, our meeting rooms have become classrooms. Our parents have become teachers along with our teachers themselves. As we continue to work through these difficult moments, I say to all of you, thank you. We have yet much work ahead of us, but as we continue to press forward, we should all know that the South Bend School Corporation stands behind each and every one of you. Let us continue to work together and do not be afraid to reach out if you need anything, be it scholastic or otherwise. I look forward to continuing my engagement with our schools as we move from visiting schools physically to doing so virtually. Please stay healthy and above all, be safe. Me gustaria felicitar a nuestros lideres de edificios, a nuestros directores, personal, maestros, y especialmente a nuestros estudiantes. Mientras nos unimos para enfrentar esta pandemia global, nuestras casas se han convertido en lugares de trabajo y escuelas. Nuestras salas se han convertido en salones de educación. Nuestros padres se han convertido en maestros junto con nuestros propios maestros. Mientras continuamos trabajando en estos momentos difíciles, les digo a todos gracias. Aún tenemos mucho trabajo por delante, pero a medida que seguimos avanzando, todos deberíamos saber que el South Bend School Corporation respalda a todos y cada uno de ustedes. Sigamos trabajando juntos y no tengan miedo de comunicarnos si necesita algo, ya sea escolar o de otro tipo. Espero continuar mi compromiso con nuestras escuelas a medida de pasar, de visitar las escuelas físicamente a hacerlo habitualmente. Por favor, manténganse saludables y sobre todo, estén seguros. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other discussion. Uh, I guess we're going to close out our first virtual, uh, board meeting. And I have a feeling we may have more going forward. So actually, I got to say it was kind of enjoyable. I don't have a, uh, a, uh, little hammer, so I'm going to use my mouse. So do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Mr. Monterosa, seconded by Ms. Wesley. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
And this virtual meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and everyone have a great evening and stay safe and stay healthy. Take care.
Thank you.